We still have a quorum and nothing really is decided.
Yep.
Okay. Well, it could be worse. Well, we ended the tie though. We need that tiebreaker. So legally can we have the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
We can, okay.
Yeah, so we got a simple majority.
Yep.
Enough people.
Four out of seven.
Yep.
Let's get this show on the road then. In the newspaper tonight? All right. It is 7:03. Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission for August 1st, 2024. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for justice and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take role.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Present.
Commissioner Yoder is absent. Commissioner Weiner is absent. Commissioner Memberto is absent. Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Here.
And Chair Whitliff?
Here.
Community Development Director?
Here.
And Administrative Assistant? Thank you.
I do have something to say. This stems back, I mean, many of our meetings. But it came, this came from the city clerk last meeting. That we've had, and we've all done it, so side discussions. According to Robert's Rules and Open's Meeting Act, we cannot have those anymore. According to the city clerk is that these proceedings are being recorded and they're being dissected by the viewers in the city outside the city. So we have to keep everything forward when we discuss it. That's all right? Okay? So it's nobody's fault, but, you know, because we've all done it. So there's no texting, no notes being passed or anything like that. Okay? Approval of agenda. This time the planning commission can take action to approve the August 1st, 2024 agenda. There are motion.
We've got a amendment to the agenda for tonight?
Uh, yes.
First, we need to, sorry, approve the agenda.
Okay.
To make a motion to approve it in a second and then amend.
Motion by Mick. Second by?
I'll second.
Bob? Discussion?
Now we can have the amendment.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for the recording secretary. Going forward is Kelso Kelly.
Do we have support for that?
Is there support?
I'll support.
Now we take a vote on that, Laura?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I'll make.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've been away for a month, so.
You've been on the road too long today.
Okay. Second. Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. And then please take role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Congratulations.
Well, that was, that was just amending the agenda. Now we need to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Well, I'm pretty sure.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Agenda as amended.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Marlene? Discussion? None? Please take role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, sorry, Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now, congratulations.
Well, now we added that to new business. One more time. Sorry.
All right, well, you know, someday or another, you will be congratulated.
If I remember right, these, our secretary is this one who's supposed to appoint the recording secretary. If that's within our bylaws.
Is it?
Yes. When we had our elections, we elected Marlene and she had to appoint you as the recording secretary at that time.
Okay.
That's right. So you better be good to Mar- to Marlene.
Okay. Such power.
Perpetual bylaws.
Scott, Bob?
Thanks.
So, okay. Next, conflict of interest. If there's any commissioner with any type of conflict on today's agenda. Does he speak up? None? Okay. Approval of minutes at this time, the planning commission can approve the July 11th, 2024 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second it.
By Marlene? Discussion? None? Please take role.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Correspondence? We did have a letter, but all the commissioners received that and will not be read aloud. Presentation, speaker? We have none. Public comment on agenda-related items? I'll go through the motions. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium. We'll go through the chair. Also, there will not be any interaction between the podium and audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the chair can adjourn the meeting. There will be a five-minute limit to address the planning commission. Now we'll move along to new business. Appointment of Kelso Kelly as recording secretary. Marlene?
The name again?
Kelso Kelly.
I'd like to appoint Kelso Kelly as our new secretary.
Recording.
Recording secretary, excuse me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Now. Woo-hoo!
I don't know if you know what you got yourself in for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to old business, the master plan.
Yes, so in your packet, you received a little bit of information, and I'm going to do this with every packet from Michigan State University Extension Office. Just a little bit of tidbit, little information that we have. It was just talking about what should be in the master plan. The next thing I want to talk about with the master plan is we did receive a template for a letter of notice of intent. It's going to be for a distribution list to let all the area communities know that we are going to be revising and working on our master plan. So that letter of intent will be going out within the next week or two, just to let everybody know that that's going to be happening. And then also, there is, let's see, plans and studies. Let's see here. So we were, I was asked by Williams &amp; Works for some information that we have about the city. So I just kind of want to quickly go through the list of information that I gave to her. And is there anything that anybody else can think of that we might want to add or have them review or take a look at? So I did send them, it's an old version, but a 2017 strategic plan. I sent them a non-motorized transportation for the master plan. The countywide park and recreation plan. The river street, streetscape plan. Developers' Resources Guide. MDOT Road Diet. Historical downtown and the RRC Master Plan update. So is there anything else that you can see? Oh, and the parks and commissions reports. So.
The two river walk plans.
Okay. Okay, anything else? What else can you think of?
Well, I know there's, we're working on things, but housing is already in there. And the master plan, development of our industrial parks.
Okay.
The other would be the rail relocation.
Oh, very good. Forgot about that one. Yep.
Got some, what was the thing we were doing where we had that? Doing stuff for, in Maxwelltown and all that part of the street? What was that?
Special, something zone, a...
Not Renaissance.
No.
No, it's, I'm blanking on it right now, too.
I'm blanking on it. It was a few months ago they came in here about that, where they said from, uh...
That was Tracy Davis, wasn't it?
Tracy Davis, yeah.
You mean for like our chill grant that we're talking about for the?
No.
Oh, for housing for Maxwelltown?
It was an area she was covering from the east side of US 31 through Maxwelltown.
Was that part of the NEZ?
That's it, yeah.
The NEZ, yes. Yep.
Does that go into that at all?
Yep, I can add that, yeah, for information for them, yeah.
Can you think of anything, Marlene?
Oh, you covered everything.
Um, maybe just some more information or updated information, and probably on the Ramsdale would be a good one. Some area.
Well, the beach plan isn't, isn't anywhere to be...
Be, right, but...
Submitted, but eventually that would be part of the...
Yep, exactly.
Gosh, I can't think of anything, but I'm sure there is, so.
Okay.
When you, on the letter, is it going to have the open dates for public comment?
No, it's just a very generic, "this is happening," that's it type of letter. Yeah, just a couple of lines.
Some announcements to be, yeah, to queue them in.
Yep, absolutely. Yep.
If we happen to think anything after the meeting, do you want us to just unveil it to you?
Yes, please. Yep, because I'm going to be talking with her on Tuesday afternoon, and that's when I'm just going to kind of give a list. I have copied this in an email and gave her all the links to all of these right now, but I told her, you know, I would be adding more. I just don't want to piecemeal it, but I'll give her all of those information, all of this.
You know, just, just dawned on me, we might want to send a copy of our road development plan.
Yep, that's what I said, MDOT Road Diet and any information.
City one.
Oh, the city one?
The city has one that deals with all the local streets.
Oh.
And since it's all about fixing the darn roads, that's helpful because it basically plots out a five-year plan
Okay.
for our, the local streets.
Infrastructure improvements.
Right, yep.
With Teresa, with the master plan, will there be a table at the September 14th Block Party Boat Festival downtown?
Yes, sir, will be.
Great.
Yep.
And Labor Fest.
What was the date of the Labor Fest?
That's 31 August.
Oh, yes.
Where, is that down at the beach?
It's down at the beach.
Down at the beach, yep.
Lions Pavilion.
Yep.
Good. There should be some good comments coming out of both of those.
Yes. Yep, yeah. And then lastly, you might have received an email from me about the daycare. And so what I was asked, and get my paper out here. So I just introduced whom I am, and then we're working with the planner from McKenna. And they're offering some, actually they contacted me today. They are offering us the free review of our ordinance to see if there's anything that needs to be changed for childcare, daycare, and the conditions and how to improve them. So what I'd like to do for each of you, if you could just answer this question for me. Tell me what are some of the barriers to childcare have you or someone that you know has faced in our community? So.
Closing the casino childcare center was
A big thing.
tremendous blow. And then Catholic Central's childcare closed.
Right.
So that's within the last five years. We've had two significant closures of childcare, affordable childcare. Both of those were, I would consider to be affordable childcare.
I think both of them are within the last three years.
Yeah.
They were that recent.
Okay.
And some independents that have retired or just stopped business, so. I feel for the young families who do it's.
Yep.
So the more we can do as a planning commission and as a city with city council to, to help alleviate the issues.
That's right.
We need to.
Well, like...
I'd like to see what, you know, if you could report back on what
Oh, yes.
they would have, because that, I would, I personally would think that it would be reasonable to allow childcare within limits in every district without having to get a special use permit.
Right, and the cost, yeah.
Because again, especially if you're only looking at, for example, let's say you have a newborn, so you're going to take in two more newborns. Well, a thousand dollars, you'd never make that up.
Right.
So.
Did this email go out to other people than us?
Yes. Yes. Over 60 people I sent the email to, and I've, right now, only got about seven responses. So I'm just hoping this in a couple of days or something. And how we got in touch was Bill Gamble went to his conference for managers up in the UP. When he was in Marquette, they started talking about it. He got in a conversation and he said, "Hey, you know, I know somebody that, at her heart, you know, I don't know if you knew this, but for over eight years, I did my own group daycare license when my children were little." So I did all of that, and then also I taught a night class at Muskegon Community College involving childcare centers and how to operate a successful business, and I taught that class for several years. So I said, "Absolutely, I'll take this on. Let's do our little bit of research. Let's find out what they have to offer." And they said, "Absolutely." After talking to me, "We'll do this for you. We'll help you out with it." And they got a grant for that, so, yeah. Absolutely. All right. So next, we've got the Downtown Development Authority. Hopefully, everybody got the newsletter. Want to thank Andrew for the letter to the planning commission. Thank you.
And hand-delivering mine.
Yeah, no problem. I was hoping you got that.
The only problem I had with it, it didn't want to load the first three times. I had to load it the fourth time before anything would show up. Only parts of it would show up.
Really? Okay.
I tried it on my phone, the only part of it. Tried it on the work computer, got the other part, but not the first part. So I had to go back about another two times before it all came. So there's, you got, there's a glitch in there someplace.
Okay. For men.
No, the open communication like this is, is great, so.
Yeah, and we'll worry about it.
Good.
For sure, so hopefully they'll update every year, every month.
Okay.
As much as I can, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, the next is 91 Arthur, their Lakeside Social. So Jerry Blue, the building inspector, myself, met with Gary Mannor. It's M-A-N-N-O-R. He works closely with Bridget Vanderhoff, Vanderhoff, excuse me, about the 91 Arthur Street. So I just want to give you just a little bit of update. After my site plan review committee got together and we talked about everything that needed to review and go over, these are just a couple of things that we found that they need to come back to the table with us. One, they're going to be talking with Spicer, get an update of some things that need to change on the site plan review, or I mean, on the site plan. We don't have any of the drainage, so Jeff from DPW requested some more information about the drainage. The next thing, we're waiting, they're still waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers just to finally give us the certificate for that. They want to do, they thought about doing the pavement and next door to it, the parking lot, like in a Phase Two, and said through the ordinance and reading, it has to be done right away. They can't leave anything gravel. So we talked about that. Just some of the ordinance to reiterate about landscaping, lighting, because lighting's been such a big issue of that. Just going over, there is a shared easement that is down there to the boat, so had to get the successor involved, Molly, make sure that they knew about the easement and the width of that. And then just some updates for the fire department. So it went well. They're supposed to get back to us in a couple of weeks, so I'll have something to report on next time.
Was there anything about a geotechnical report at all for the area? Because I know like for condos are, those were all slab docks in that area, and there was a lot of stuff in that area before.
Oh, that's right, and we did had talked about that. So let me ask and find that out.
I know when we get on the other, where the old motel used to be where the boat is, that's where all those slab docks used to be, and when they put the pilings in for condos, we were busting through slab docks all over the place.
So would Army Corps of Engineer, or who should be the one to?
I'm not sure who would do that, to be honest with you.
All right.
City engineer, no?
City engineer, city engineer should look into it.
Okay, so first Spicer.
Because before, it was, it was a different organization we had in the city for the first, it was Abomar's first group.
Okay.
Who is our city engineer?
Spicer. Yep, okay, yeah.
That'd be something. There might not be anything there, but it's something we need, you know, to try, avoid a pitfall.
Yeah, absolutely.
Catch, Bob.
Okay.
And then, I know we're probably some ways away, but we'll get closer to unveiling this thing, and I can get Bridget in here.
That'd be great. The next that I have is 94 Maple, the library. I know Pam had asked me a couple of things about the library. I don't have that information yet, and she's not here tonight. But the other information I wanted to share about the library is they are starting the work on the repair of the building. As you recall, that was the waterproofing system along the foundation wall, some piping system for the drainage, masonry work, restoring of brick. Now, we did have a phone call, Kelso and I did, about a company out of Chicago that's going to be doing some of the work. They really thought that they had to have a business registration here in just the city. It was kind of, nope, only a business registration if you're new business and you're going to be here permanently. But they wanted to make sure that they had everything, correct documents with us, that they knew that they were coming into town. We knew who they were and introduced, so it was a great, just to touch base and go over what the library is going to be doing. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, so, yeah.
Was any of that, that work requiring any kind of a permission from them? Or is it all repair and maintenance?
All repair and maintenance, and it went through the historical district, so, yep, went through all there.
And I saw that they did pour the sidewalks.
Yes.
I, I just thought they would have made it yellow.
All on the yellow brick.
Right, the Yellow Brick Road.
Yeah.
Building's just been neglected for too many years.
Yeah. All right.
Probably still wetting up, Mark, so you can probably chisel your name.
So lastly, I have the 376 Fifth Street. That is the log cabin accessory building that was put in place. Jerry and I stopped over. We had to make sure to let them know that they need to have permits. They needed to fill those out. They did. Actually, today I went ahead and allowed those permits. It's 200 square foot, so they do not need a building permit. They do meet the setbacks. I did give that permit today, so that one is all set.
Kind of like the Beverly Hillbillies, you have a mansion and your log cabin right next to it.
That's right.
Wait till they put the...
It is pretty nice.
They didn't put the cement on it yet.
Give them time. Okay?
All right, and that's all that I have there.
All right, thank you. Public comments and communication?
Andrew Stafford, 75 First Street with the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Development Authority. I appreciate everybody looking over the DDA material that I sent over, and I just want to invite everybody to the DDA meetings that do occur every month. They're the second Wednesday at 8:30 at the Community College Downtown. I know we're all very busy, but I just wanted to kind of have, extend the invite to everybody on, on the planning commission. So I would love to see some new faces at the DDA meetings, and if we are kind of concerned about what's really going on with the DDA, I think it's great to be able to attend some of those meetings outside of our own. You know, that, that's why I love coming to these meetings, just because it keeps me educated on what's going on in planning commission, so. Really, I think it's a good practice for people on boards, just, you know, of course, not every month, but whenever you can. If you're interested in something on the agenda, I invite you to come out, so thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Is that, is that a morning meeting?
Yeah, so it's a morning meeting, 8:30 again. I know it's difficult for people to make those, but 8:30 in the morning, second Wednesday of every month. Occasionally, a special meeting here and there, but it's pretty consistent. And there's normally an all right turnout of merchants in public, so.
You want to make coffee and fresh brioche?
Oh, of course, with, with doughnuts, yeah.
Hey, you got my attention. Thank you. No one else? Okay. Staff board and reports?
So the Michigan Association of Planning is recognizing Roger, and I know he's not here tonight, but Roger has been awarded the, a nice plaque, and it's from the American Planners Association Michigan chapter. They have recognized him for his achievement of 40 years, being a member. So they have invited him to attend the conference, the Michigan Planning Annual Conference at the Amway Grand Plaza, where they want to invite him to a reception and present the award to him. And so that is going to be September 25th. But what I would like to do for our next meeting in September, when Roger will be able to make it, I'd like to get a cake and invite his family. I've been talking to his daughter, Sarah, and I'd like to recognize him here. You know, invite the newspaper to come out and do that and give that recognition to him. So he was a little surprised, but just, you know, Roger, okay. But I told them how much we appreciated it, so I would like to do that for September.
He is the godfather.
Yes.
I know for so many years, we have gone out to sites, checking everything and that, and he's been very dedicated on that. At all our own expenses, we check everything out, and not much gratitude comes back at you, you know. So I'm happy that they're going to do something.
For him, yeah. And I thought we should do something too local, that would be great to have, so. And I'll invite the other boards to attend that meeting that night, or a small little reception beforehand or something, so. I'll work that detail out.
Because he's on the Brownsville, too.
Yeah.
How about extending to the council, city council?
Yes, absolutely. But I think maybe would, could we agree, could we do it half hour beforehand for the next meeting in September? Just have, you know, a small cake recognition and then
Sure.
do that? Yep.
Considering this is with the Michigan Association of Planners, would it be out of line to invite the county planning commission to recognize Roger?
I don't think so.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that's a great, great idea.
Bob, you're just full of it tonight.
There you go.
Could be worse. Spent too much time on the road today.
I understand.
So the next report in your packet was the permits report. Were there any questions or anything anybody wanted to ask about?
No, but I like seeing what's going on, because we're always asked, and then we like, eh, I don't know, you know. So that helps make you not look so stupid that you're aware of what's going on.
Actually, with this report like this, somebody asks this question, we can pull this out, and they'll look at it and say, oh, never mind.
Next, I received three complaints about lights, as you can see in the packet. So it was the old Olson lumber, Riverside Charter, and Trinity Lutheran Church. All three of the, those entities received a letter. With the letter, it was, what do I want to say, certified mail. They all received it. I did hear back from Riverside Charter. They're getting together with engineer to come up with some kind of plate or something to go over the top of that to deflect that. It's real bright to the condos across. I've seen the video, I've seen the pictures and stuff. I'm just waiting to hear from the Olsons and from Trinity Lutheran Church still, so.
So what was the Olson issue? I'm not aware of that one.
The light in front of the building is quite bright onto the road.
Yes. Yep, and it's the neighbors across the street.
When I drive, drive past it at night when I'm coming home sometimes.
Yeah.
It's got, when there's a lot of tree branches and stuff and leaves, it's good, but when leaves are down, it's like...
Yeah, and it sounds like it's fairly new, probably within the last nine months or so.
I think, I think they've replaced the bulbs on it, is what's happening.
Okay. Yeah. The next in front of you, you got your paper, that's from Michigan State University Extension Office Classes. They're offering the Citizens Planner Program again. I don't know if anybody wants to renew or has not done that, or would like a refresher course, but that's being held October 3rd, the first class, and then the following classes after that. They do give a discount if four or more want to attend, but I wanted to share that with all of you.
Yeah, I'd like.
All these, all these are going to be held at Brown Township? Is that what it's saying?
Yes, yep.
Good.
Yep, Browns, Brown Township Hall, yep. So just let me know if you do want to and I can register you and take care of all of that.
Well, you might as well sign me up right now.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay. Alright, so there's our four.
October third.
Well, then it's also after that, yes. Oh, is it?
That one and the November seventh one.
Well, I was gonna say October third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and then November seventh.
Yeah, the third and the seventh would be our meeting nights.
What time is that class?
Six to nine. What, could we look at the calendar right now? And would you want to change or move the October meeting date?
So the tenth?
And I believe you could miss possibly one.
Sunday, which doesn't make any sense.
No, tenth is on a Thursday.
November?
October.
Oh, October, never mind.
Yeah, cause it's every week. So the third, and then it goes to the tenth, to the seventeenth, to the twenty-fourth, and then the thirtieth and the seventh.
So those are all on Thursdays, which are normal, our, normal meeting nights would be Thursday.
I would do the tenth.
That's also a Thursday too. But that's also one of the nights that's classes held.
I think you have to take all of them. I have, I think you have to do all of the classes.
There's two, right?
No, there's?
There's six, there's five.
Six of them, one, two, three, four, yeah, five, six of them. Every week. Yeah, so it's.
I wonder if we have to take all of them or should we could just take parts of them? Or just take a certain number of them?
I could call Mary and ask.
Yeah. Yeah, realistically, I think we could easily make four up to six.
Now, a question for Bob. The classes that we took online?
Yeah.
Are any of those here? I don't remember.
But I can look, I've got those. I've got those all documented.
Planning and zoning context, I thought that was it.
I thought we did implementing the planning and making zoning decisions. I think we did those online. There were some we did online.
If you could check.
Yeah, I can check for you. Yep, absolutely.
And then our credits, what we have currently?
Yep, that'd be great for me to send a reminder for everybody where the credits sit, yep.
Beautiful.
Some of these we may have already had and we just maybe get, get the ones we didn't have.
Right. Okay, if we can do that, then we can set a date or, or times that we can.
Okay. And then I just want to add one last thing. Hopefully you guys have all enjoyed your weekly newsletter and that will be coming out every, tried to every Wednesday. So you've gotten two issues of the planning newsletter. So I will continue that if.
Now, do you do that online?
Yep, I just create it, just copy paste, quick, put it out, send it to you. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's right here, Marlene.
Line.
Right, but I?
Yeah, I get those.
Yep, you got them, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, they, with the DDA and yours fills us in. Makes the bowl full, so.
Alright.
Is that it, Teresa?
Yes.
Kelso, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for us tonight?
I, I just wanted to say I was really tickled to get the position and I'll do as good a job as I can. I, I know there was a little bit of a kerfuffle with my name getting mixed up, but that's alright. I just wanted to tell you guys that I'll do a really good job. And I've never been a real estate agent or a teacher, so I just want you to know. I'm just me, I've just worked at factories and gone to college here in the last few years and I really enjoyed that, so this will be good. I'm really looking forward to it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Laura?
I have nothing.
Will this be your last meeting or is there?
Uh, maybe, I might come and sit on this side of her next time.
Alright, a little more mentoring time.
Might be.
Well, thank you. We'll move to a member discussion, Marlene.
I wondered if you had checked on that old laundromat with the, is that a daycare? Or are there other people living in there?
Well, I tried to attempt to knock on the door a couple of times and nobody's been there, but I don't know if it's the time or what's going on. I've had a couple of other people say something to me, so I'm going to be putting a letter together probably tomorrow or Monday and got to send that out to them, so, yeah. And sometimes it's been hard to get a hold of people lately, so, yep.
Mick?
Nothing for the group.
Robert?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, well, I got a few things, because I missed last. First, I just want to apologize for the last meeting that I wasn't here. Bob took it over and ran it well. I was working, of course, trying to get a vote done, which it was finished. But the boys are up in Minnesota right now, taking care of the little issues that we ran into. So please accept my apology for missing the meeting. Couple of things, the weed marijuana retailer on Arthur Street is closed. I looked at it today, I'm on the phone with Teresa and it says a merger is coming. Yeah, whatever that means.
The Benzey ones got the same sign on the door.
It does.
Yeah, all, they're all their branches. Cause when I, when I went through today, Travers, I saw the sign on their door at the Benzey store too.
Okay, alright.
And their permit expires tomorrow.
Alright.
And did you notice any signs or green signs located all over the front lawn or anything when you were by there today, Mark?
Didn't notice.
Okay.
Like, real estate?
Yeah, so.
I like about this big, they're green signs and they say cannabis in bright yellow letters.
I, you know what, honestly, I didn't notice.
The other sign was, it said cannabis.
Yeah.
It sounds like several signs, so I'm gonna have to take a look at that and see how many there are and where they're located, so.
Did, Teresa, did we get anywhere with the lights at the Manistee Hotel on Arthur Street?
No.
No, because that is light pollution on Jocelyn Cove?
Okay.
Cause we're running into it now with the complaints.
Yep, with the lights, yep.
Okay. Temporary structures, have we done anything with that yet?
With?
Temporary structures, little garages, little?
Oh, yes, yes. So we've sent out a couple of letters. I usually give them two chances. I've sent out, I think, five or six, but not many. But on those, but just waiting. It's a due process of sending out letters, waiting two weeks and certified mail and all of that, so. Yeah.
Please bear with me, I just have a few more, another half hour.
I just saw something, Mark.
Okay, go ahead.
That old gas station on Fifth Street.
Okay.
And going on with it straightening that mess up.
How many, I haven't been by there lately.
There was a lot of cars there the other day.
And I did talk to somebody who's a neighbor and it sounds like he's just being friendly and letting extra people park there. And he's also letting some people park boats and other materials just to be there, maybe making some money or whatever, letting them park there. So we need to, I need to send a letter to them and, yeah.
And I know the bar pays him to let patrons park there too.
Yep, and then they're not there very long and then they leave. So it's a lot of coming and going, coming and going. So it's more or less being used almost like a parking lot.
This is a lot, it's the long-term stuff that's there to concern.
Okay.
Is there, what is the criteria for something like that? Is there a limit on the number of vehicles? Is it? Five vehicles?
Yeah.
So five. Any given time? Correct.
Yep. But again, too, you go out there, you see something and when you go back, you see something different and, yeah. But, yep.
Let's see, the newsletter and DDA report was on my list, so you guys tackled that, so thank you. Speaker for next month, Teresa, would, we can get the city attorney to run through the Opens Meeting Act?
Yep, and the Robert's Rules, yep.
Rules.
That would be good for Tim.
Alright, September fourteenth is the Block Party slash Boat Festival downtown. The Chief Tom at the Fire Department, they are going to be making root beer, floats and sodas. I'm just wondering if any PC member would like to donate for the materials for them? Because the proceeds will be going to children that have been burned in fires, going to a camp somewhere in Michigan. Bob, you probably know a little bit about that.
It's quite the camp. It's, it's fantastic for those kids. They're, they are treated like kings and queens at that camp. Cause these kids have been traumatized so bad and they're just, it puts the kids over the top.
I think it'd be a nice gesture from the PC to do that. So if anybody would like to donate, you know, twenty, thirty bucks if you can. And I'm meeting with, I don't know if you're going to meet with Chief Tom anytime soon, Teresa? But I know August eighth, we have a meeting about the Boat Festival coming up, so, with Jamie Catlett. Andrew, have you been involved in that at all?
I have not.
Okay, alright, I'll see if I can get you in there on August eighth. What was that date again? August eighth is the meeting for the Boat Festival? Okay, and then the festival itself is? On the fourteenth, September, yes. Alright.
Sorry, that's what you taught me about.
Yep, well, actually, we're having a meeting Tuesday too.
On the sixth, yeah.
The pallet seller, I see that he is no longer?
Correct.
Twelfth Street?
That was shut down the same day within two hours.
Good.
Yes.
Has he, has he surfaced at all?
Oh, yes.
Oh, he has?
Um, well, just by phone calls and upset and angry and said, you know, he probably wouldn't be back to sell anything in the city. But I said he needed a business registration, needed to give us an address and.
And the business registration is what, fifty?
Seventy-five dollars.
Okay, alright.
Can I add one thing to that storage? I was by there the other day. And they have cleaned it up somewhat, but there's no grass and there's weeds that are, you know, them little, look like cone head, I don't know, people.
Right, so when I reviewed through the business plan and with the site plan and all the documentation, there was nothing in there stated about the certain landscape. And I know that the sand that is in there is really just basically like beach sand. And I know that it's, you know, mounds here, whatever. So nobody has actually flattened it out or straightened it out or anything, so.
Take a weed whacker through there.
Now, that's the DPW.
Nope, this is the inside you're talking about, the inside of the fence, which is theirs, but.
DT, DPW to take care of that, correct?
Nope, this is inside their fence. So that is the storage unit area she's talking about, but the inside, so it wouldn't be DPW.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be the owner. So, and he's not here, you know, he's not local, so, yeah.
In those type of solid conditions, it's extremely hard to grow anything.
To please, clearly.
Yeah, well, and you, and you can't take a lawnmower through there. I mean, it's like beach gravel.
Need to put beach, put beach grass in.
Yeah.
Have to use a weed whacker through there.
Yeah.
Okay, I received a call the other night on, I don't know why I got it, but I did. Golf carts in town? That some have been carrying fuel cans, not plowed down, not secured at all. There was almost an accident on Maple Street because they pulled over and their rear end was out with a gas can in the back. So I don't know if we can send that off to the police?
Yep.
So they can take a look at that?
Yep, I can do that.
Also, I see a lot of golf carts with no lights, no signals. And those, that was not part of the agreement that was originally approved.
Yeah.
So I don't think that people are going through the permit process, which was a requirement.
Yes.
And maybe another suggestion to send something back out, because it's a new group every year. And I mean, if you're renting it, you get the right piece of equipment. But there was quite a few of them, I saw they had no lights at all.
You're seeing people come into town with them on trailers.
Yep.
During vacations and they're running around with that and then they're gone when they leave.
I noticed some, some people from Father Township have been coming into town with those, going down Maple, coming into town. And they probably, I didn't notice, but they probably don't have any type of signals or lights on them. So if the police department could take a look at that again.
Sure.
And I did talk to the mayor on one thing about signs in the city right of way. She said she was going to address that again, because it's, it's really rampant right now. It drives me nuts. And it's going to get worse during the political season if we don't kind of get a handle on it now. Because then people are going to complain that we're just making, we're taking sides.
Side, right.
So if we, if we can get rid of all of the, you know, power washing signs and the gravel and all the other business signs, then if somebody is putting their yard sign out somebody's right of way, we're not picking on them. I did notice that the Tuesday night concert down at the beach, the signs were on the highway, right at Huntington, at First and?
Oh, okay.
First and Cypress, they were in, in the city right of way, so.
Oh.
Could cause issues, so.
And maybe I need to suggest to DPW, even if they're in that, if the, the kids are, the younger people that are buzzing around that they've hired for seasonal work, if they're out there, you know, that would be a big help too, to maybe pull those if they're right in the road right of way. That might be a suggestion I could ask Jeff to help with.
I probably saw ten signs on my walk to Guardian Angel Church today, so.
Okay, no, that's a great idea and I'll try to talk to them and see if they can help out.
One more thing, and that's for Teresa. We address city council on the thirteenth?
Yes.
When do you want to get together? You hash out that report.
Next week, when would be a good day, just let me know.
Do we do it Thursday?
Sure. Yep. When is a good time on Thursday? I think the afternoon, I'm free.
Whatever is good for you.
Okay, I'll send you an invite.
Just let me know.
Yep.
Okay. So that is, today's what?
The first.
First.
The eighth, boy, that's some math. Eight, eight, twenty-four, okay. Alright, thirteenth is the beating. Okay? Thank you. I'll remember. Okay, you know what, that's all I had.
I have one other thing I thought of. Rose Merrick's that own that building down from the old city drugs. They've had a couple of years, they've had permits. I know they've had expired and nothing's been done on that building to open up a business or anything. It still sits empty. He's got Christmas decorations in the window.
Four eleven.
Four eleven?
Four eleven.
That is the owner?
Jeff Gordon.
Jeff Gordon, yes. Actually, we've been in talks with Jeff. And actually, the building inspector went over to his property. He is working on it. He is getting his building permits.
So something's been?
I mean, he is, yes, he is working on it. Yes, it is taking a long time. But you can't condemn somebody or chastise somebody for doing that. I mean, he's working on it.
It's been sitting empty with nothing.
Right. He's doing it when he has time or when he can, when it's allowed, so. Yep, and he's going through all the proper channels and getting things done, so.